This is Michael Manjo's Chairman for Finance. This is our regular meeting Thursday, April 15th, 6:00 PM. Please allow me to confirm those members, staff and participants are present that can hear me. I will also ask the moderator to confirm the digital identity of each of the aforementioned participants. After affirmative identification, members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Steve Kirsch.
Here.
Dan Kraszewski.
Here.
Donna Lynn Wells.
Here.
I think that's all we're gonna have is the four of us tonight. We have first selection Ken Kellogg.
Here.
Trigger Pat O'Hara.
Here.
And Ron Badowski.
I'm here.
And Heidi DeMee.
I'm here.
Perfect. I hereby declare we have a quorum and call this meeting to order. A copy of the agenda and any related materials have been posted and can be found on the Town of Monroe's website, www.monroect.org for public inspection. This public meeting is conducted remotely in compliance with Section 1 of Governor Lamont's statute of orders 7B dated March 14th, 2020 using go-to-meeting electronic conference and technology. Using this technology, this public shall participate in real time in this meeting by computer tablets, smartphone or telephone using the access information set forth in the meeting agenda. Please be advised that each meeting has unique participation information, so please be sure you have access to correct meeting. Notice is hereby given that only 250 participants may access this remote electronic public meeting at one time. Access to this meeting using this technology is granted solely by the technology provider on a first access basis, is not controlled by the Town of Monroe while it is anticipated. We will not exceed this participation limit for this meeting. Should it appear, we are approaching said limit so that any member of the public might access this meeting. I as chairman reserve the right to adjourn and continue the meeting at a later using technology appropriate to ensure all members of the public may participate. Please take note of the following regarding this remote electronic public meeting. This meeting is conducted in real time. This meeting is open for the public. Any member of the public may listen to this meeting anonymously. This meeting is being recorded. While we ask that you mute your microphones unless recognized to speak, and anything you say, do or display on your screen may become part of the recording. But the recording should be posted at the town's website within seven days. The recording should be made available to the public within a reasonable time. The meeting should follow standard parliamentary procedure. However, I ask that participants follow these special rules. In addition, please mute your microphone so as reduced background noise makes them not speaking. Prior to speaking on each occasion, each speaker should clearly state their name. Title for the record, the use of the chat feature is prohibited, will not be considered during this meeting. As set forth in the agenda, this meeting will feature public participation. I have not received any written comments from the public between the date the agenda was posted and one hour before the start of this meeting. If there are any members in public who wish to speak during this public participation, please announce yourself by name and address one at a time. Once I've made a list of all public participants, I will call if you want to afford three minutes for any comments. All right. We are ready to go. Review of minutes and voting record for April 1.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. I move to accept the meeting minutes and voting records for April 1st, 2021.
You have a second?
Donna Lynn Wells, I second that.
Any questions, discussions, comments? Okay, hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
And Dan?
Aye.
And myself, aye. All right, first selection.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Actually, I don't have any additional reports. We've been kind of been in close conversation with this board over the last several weeks during the budget process.
Yes, we have.
Most of the things that are of most import, we've been covering week by week. So maybe we have a couple other items to talk about when we get to budget in terms of one or two pieces of information that we started alluding to the last meeting, but now I have no other specific report.
Updates for this week?
Nope. Thank you.
Perfect. All right, we will move to public participation. Any members of the public wish to speak?
I would. Pat O'Hara.
Pat O'Hara. I was gonna say, who was that? Mr. O'Hara, okay. Anybody else wants to speak? Mr. O'Hara, you get to go first.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I was reviewing your 415 meeting minutes package. And I guess this is the April 1st Board of Finance workshop minutes that I'm looking at. And there was a statement about starting salary as third or fourth highest in Fairfield County. I've done a little looking online and it appears as though we're fourth highest starting salary in the state. I would just suggest to this board perhaps that they spend a little time taking a look at the statistics around where our starting salaries are as compared to our adjusted equalized net grand list, which is one of the metrics used when negotiating these things because our adjusted equalized net grand list is more like 46th and our starting salary at fourth seems more than competitive. I would also suggest perhaps that this board take a look at some of the Board of Ed policy regarding conflict of interest, Board Policy 9270 and 9271 Code of Ethics, because I've been listening to a few board meetings lately. And I just get a sense of some concerns about where some folks are when they're talking about things like salary. And from the material I have, fourth highest in the state is kind of hard, kind of high for the Town of Monroe, I think. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Anybody else wants to speak before we move on? Give it one more call out?
Mike, it's Ron Badowski, Director of Finance. I believe Patrick is correct and I, you know, I believe the superintendent said that. You know, being the fourth highest in Fairfield County, more likely than not, you're going to be the fourth highest in the
I was thinking the same thing. It might be, they might true be the same fact. Yeah.
Yeah. Actually, gentlemen, no, it's not. Now Fairfield County has a variety of wages. That this, remember, the state of Connecticut has towns like Avon, which is outside of Fairfield County, which is quite well to do from an equalized grand list standpoint. Again, I think you can get your hands on the complete statistics. And what I'm really suggesting is that the Board of Finance perhaps want to have a good handle on this information. Because I, I don't, like I said, I saw fourth highest in the state and I saw other information that doesn't take Fairfield County as, you know, the top 20 towns in the state.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. I thought the other comment the superintendent made was that it was a combination of both Derg A and B as well as Fairfield County. Now, I don't know what, where, where that puts Avon, whether they're in Derg A or B. I think Pat's, Pat's perfectly, you know, correct. There's other ways to look at the numbers. But I, I don't think there was any intention of anybody being misled, but that's it.
Okay, good. All right, no one else. We're gonna move on. Unfinished business. We're just skipping through the three-year model. New business, we have the auditors presenting the financial statements. They make it in the, are they with us there, Ron? A lot of people across the top of my screen.
Yeah, so the audit partner, Joseph Sampaoli and the audit manager Catherine Patton are both on.
Perfect. I'd see you there, Catherine. All right, floor is yours.
Okay, I'm not, not sure if everyone has that presentation, that two-page thing. We're just gonna use that as a guide to kind of walk through the various reports that were issued.
Joe, Joseph, can I step in for one second? It's Ron. So the the board, anyone who asked for hard copies has a hard copy of the CAFER. There's also, if you don't have a, an electronic version handy, you can go right through the town website through the finance department. Independent Audit Reports 1920 CAFER. And that's what they'll be walking, you know, the presentation will be referring to.
Perfect.
Sorry about that.
No problem. Thanks.
So if you look at the, the hand, you'll see it has the PDF page and the actual CAFER page. So if you're looking at it online, you can get to the right page. So we'll talk about the reports, the CAFER, the financial statements, and then later on, the federal state single audit. So starting on page seven is the opinion on the financial statements, which is, it's a modified or clean opinion, which is the type of opinion that you're looking for, no scope limitations, no problems. Or anything like, like that. Starting on page 15 is the MDNA, or page 10, sorry, is the MDNA, 10 through 18. So this is a good, good executive summary of the operations of the town during the year, what may have changed as compared to prior years, significant items such as budgetary highlights. Someone that are listed in there, the property taxes were $201,000, almost 202 higher than what was budgeted. You see almost $500,000 more ECS grant from the state for education than was budgeted. Your income from investment was $280,000 higher than budgeted, so which was quite a feat because most of our clients, it was the other way around. And general government expenditures were under, underspent by about a million dollars and education was underspent by $324,000. So those are some of the types of things that are discussed as far as the highlights. The MDNA also talks about the major funds. So if you're a capital reserve fund, you had an increase in fund balance of the $1,264,000. That's just due to the timing of expenditures and financing. You happened to issue that during the year, so that gave you positive operations. What's about your capital asset activities, some of the significant additions that happened during the year. There's some construction, some purchase of a dump truck, a certain amount of road work. Long-term debt, you had a net decrease of almost 3.8 million. That was a combination of a couple different things. Both the issuance of debt and the payments of debt, and there were some bonds that were refunded during the year, so it gave you a reduction of the 3.8.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. The net decrease of $3,676,000, how does that compare to past years? Is that in line with or greater than?
Have that specifically in front of me. It's just, it's just timing from when, you know, how's your projects are financed. So, and then you did some refunding, so you probably had a bigger decrease this year because you refunded some, some older bonds during the year, but I would have to look at.
Okay, I just wondered if you, if you had a feel for, but if it's from refunding and stuff like that, that's sort of a one-time thing. Okay.
Yeah, and I don't believe we issued any new debt last year, so.
Correct.
So if you do.
Oh, okay, all right.
You know, have some time on table eight in the, in the CAFER, which is page 126. It shows you where your debt has been over the past 10 years. So 2011, you're at 45 million, and now you're at, in bonds anyway, and you're at 30 million now, so pretty much trended, trended down over the past 10 years. Okay.
Thank you.
So starting on page 22, Exhibit C and D are the GAAP financials. If you look at, on page 22, you're at a signed fund balance. On Exhibit C is about $7.3 million at year end. As a percentage, your assigned fund balance is at 8.46, but that was due mostly to the large assigned fund balance to go for your, for your 21 budgets. So that should, should level back up, up for June 21, depending on, on the results of operations. The net change in fund balance on page 24 was a positive operation on Exhibit D of $979,000. Some of the details related to your general fund operations start on RSI 1 on page 87. So RSI 1 and shows you revenues and expenditures, but comparatively to budget and actual. So for last year, your revenues, your over-budget revenues, $767,000. And your, your expenditures run your budget by $1.7 million. And that, but your use of fund balance was about two, budgeted 2.5. So you basically had a break-even year, even though you budgeted the 2.5. You covered that in your revenue savings and your under expenditure. Your internal service fund, it's heart hypertension, the increase in that position of about $51,000, still having that position deficit of $1,264,000. On page 32, 36, are the footnotes. Gatsby loves footnotes, so there's quite a few pages there. I'm just gonna point out one footnote that's different from last year. Is on page 53, there's a coronavirus contingency note. So the profession, the firm, as well as the profession, for all types of clients, have a similar disclosure that, that just states as of June 30, nobody was really sure what was gonna happen, so it could have an impact on revenues and other things. So that, that note was new for, for this year. Looking at certain page 91, looking at the pension funds, the town plan was 89.46% funded. Last year was 95, 95% funded. The reason for that is your, but there's a decrease in that position of $201,000. So your benefit payments are a little bit higher than your annual contribution right now, so that's creating that deficit position. And, and last year, there was a negative return on investment of 0.4% for the education pension. You're at 83.41% funded in 2019. It was 89%. Again, the decrease was basically for the same reason. The benefits, benefit payments caused a decrease in that position. And there was a negative 0.87 rate, rate of return on investments for 2020. For the MERS plan, the state of Connecticut plan that the town is in, the share, town share, the pension liability is the $6.4 million. And OPEB, you, things went better for your OPEB fund. Your liability is at the $950,000. That's down from the $1.146 million from, from the prior year. So there's a decrease in experience, expected versus actual. And now the fund last year was funded at 46.7% is now funded at 56.9%. So that one went, went in the right direction as far as funding and being 56%, 57% funded is, is a very good level for that, that fund. I'll turn it over to Catherine to talk about some of the other reports.
As part of our audit, we also performed a federal and state single audit. For the federal single audit, we tested two programs, the Child Nutrition Cluster and the CDBG program. We had no findings or question costs on either of those programs. And for the state single audit, we tested Town Aid Road and had no findings or question costs on that program either. We've also provided you with a communication with those charged with governance. In that letter, we discuss significant accounting estimates, which include the pension OPEB assumptions and the heart and hypertension liability. We also state that the financial statement disclosures are consistent and clear. We've received representations from management and we're independent of the town. New applicable Gatsby standards to the town coming up are Gatsby 84 and for fiscal 2021. The biggest thing there is going to be evaluating any defined contribution pension plans to see if they need to be included in the financial statements. And the other one is Gatsby 87 in 2022 about leases. So you'll need to start gathering information on all your leases. And we're currently working on a template to help you evaluate those that we'll send out to management once it's ready. And the last item you should have received this past month was the recommendations to management, which I'm going to go through. The first one for the town was purchasing and accounts payable. We recommend that the town implement approval for new vendors. And that should only be approved after proper due diligence has been performed. And all required information and forms have been obtained by someone other than the accounts payable clerk. And in addition to this, we recommend that the accounts payable clerk be restricted from entering new vendors, even though the vendor listing is currently reviewed at year-end. The second item is other donations, that the town currently maintains two bank accounts for restricted donations for the senior center and for Parks and Recreation. We recommend that those just be moved to interest-bearing accounts. The third recommendation is for the tax office that either limiting the ability of tax, all tax employees to be able to avoid, to avoid transactions or to have the voids reviewed and approved by the tax collector on a monthly basis. The recommendation for education relates to cafeteria revenues and cash receipts. We recommend that these be recorded based on sales and that the deposits be reconciled to the sales. Alternatively, a reconciliation of the deposits made could be done to the sales from the point-of-sale system. And that should be performed monthly. And then our last recommendation is a best practice with pooled cash. We'd recommend that the town implement pooled cash in the accounting system instead of using the inter-fund accounts.
Would you be happy to answer any, any other questions?
I think my only question was, is the, I seem to remember that the cafeteria cash question came up before. Is that a carryover from a prior year or is that a new issue?
So Mike, yeah, I can answer that. That is a carryover from the prior year.
That's what I thought. Yeah.
Now, the, on the boards, on the Board of Ed side, food service has not been operating in a normal environment.
Hard to make changes in this environment, I understand.
And that's part of it. And I had discussed this with, with CAFER, Catherine. We'll be looking to have something implemented for.
That was my next question. Do we have a plan on addressing this issue?
Yeah, because it won't be operating normally for the remainder of the calendar.
But I'm saying, I'm assuming in the next school year, we will have something operational then.
Correct. That, that is the.
That was my only question.
Mike, Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance. I'd like to go back to the town pension and the education pension numbers. My interpretation is that an 89% and an 83% is still a healthy funding level. However, I don't like to see the existing funding go down, so I guess my question is, what would drive it back up? Are we taking any, any actions to bring that back up? Do we have any target that we actually are trying to hit?
I mean, I can speak to that because I'm also lucky enough to be on the pension committee. So we do look at this all the time. The reason, it's basically return-based. So, you know, we have a pension meeting coming up in a week or two. I think what you're gonna find is the way the market performed last year, much to our, all of our surprises. I think you're gonna see those numbers come right back up and it will, it will vary year over year depending on, you know, performance. We, we base everything on an average return. But it's kind of over a 10-year cycle. So on any given year, you could have a good investment year or a poor investment year, and it tends to average out over time. So I think this particular one is just a snapshot in time. I think you're gonna see the, the last two quarters are pension numbers and the total dollars of the funds are up significantly from these numbers. So I don't see it as much of a problem. We started this, when we started the pension fund, I want to say we were in the 60s. You know, 80s is very healthy when you compare them. And we do benchmark ourselves against all the other towns. So I believe we're in good standing and I expect we'll be back up into the high 80s, if not the low 90s by the time we do the next evaluations.
Okay, yeah, my, my concern was not the absolute number, but, and I recognize the market will dictate some, but I also heard the statement that said our outlays were more than our, than our intake.
Yeah, because that's based on returns, right?
I just don't, I just don't want it, and you're, the real answer, I think, or part of the answer, Mike, thank, which I thank you, is that you all are watching it from the pension committee, because I just don't want it to go, you know, down another, you know.
Oh, no, it won't. And we, you know, we also have been in the habit over the last number of years of fully funding, you know, the recommended amounts that's based on the calculations, based on the return rates, based on the mortality tables that get updated. And it's a fairly complicated actuarially generated number, and we stick to that number. So that's kind of the plan we've been on for the, probably the last five or six years, and I don't expect we're gonna veer off much based on the members of the pension.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, Mike, we did make the ADEC payment late this past year for the board, and I think that the town made it for the board two years ago. So, you know, it's, it's.
Timing issues too, yeah.
Yeah, and I think Catherine or Joseph could, could, you know, I believe that played into the board's decline in the, in the, you know, the pension, the education portion of the pension decline.
Yeah, I think we made the payment after they did the calculation, right?
It, it didn't get picked up in the, in the fiscal year 20, it got picked up, I believe, in '21. Correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine.
I believe I had to double-check the fund. I think there was a receivable for that. I believe it was recorded.
Okay.
Mike, I do have one other question. On the, on the recommendation regarding the accounts payable clerk, those issues, is anything we're doing in the potential reorganization of the finance department going to touch that in any way, shape or form, or is this just something we have to deal with regardless of anything that's in that reorganization plan?
I, it's Ken Kelly. I would think it's the, the latter, but I'll, Ron, do you want to opine on that?
Sorry, I missed the, the first part of your question there, Steve.
The, the, the separation of duties and accounts payable that was referenced, that'll, that needs to be done irrespective of the proposed changes in finding.
Yeah, yeah.
Leadership and the other changes that we'd be talking about.
Correct. Okay.
Okay. Hey, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Just going back to the pension real quick for a second, for, for Steve's information. That number also varies based upon the market. I mean, when we had our, when we had our quarterly meeting after the March decline last year in the market.
Wasn't very good.
There was some shocking on the numbers we saw, but you know, by the end of the year, it actually had reversed and increased ahead of where we were. So the, whatever the audit, whatever the audit picked up on that date, you know, that's also what you're looking at. The, the company we have that's, that's doing the investing for us has been doing a really good job. Everybody on the board seems to be real happy with them. And if you, if you, if you took a look today, we closed at $34,000, which I think is a new high. So just, just for your informational purposes on where the pension funding is going.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Pat.
Welcome.
Anything else from the auditors? Appreciate you giving it to us quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, good night.
All right. Good night.
All right. Next item on the agenda is review of municipal financial reports. I don't know if there's anything there anybody wanted to talk about before we jump to the tax collector and treasurer?
Yeah, Mike, I have one question on the year-to-date budget report, page fourteen. The tree warden account five-three-three-nine-zero. We've got expenditures including, you know, money that's, that's been allocated but, but not spent of eighty-eight point seven percent. And we happen to have seventy-five hundred dollars available. And my question, in looking at the actual budget book for the tree warden, we have two numbers in there. One is the tree trimming and one is a seventy-five hundred dollar value for the rental or, or the use of, if needed, for, of a bucket truck for trimming. And so my question is, is this seventy-five hundred dollars just mathematically, it just happens to look the same? Or is this seventy-five hundred dollars representative of not spending as much in that one section of, of account five-three-three-nine-zero? Does anybody know?
I don't know if Ron or Heidi have.
Yeah, so Steve, my, my guess would be it's, it's, we've probably encumbered the, the entire amount for tree work. And that seventy-five hundred is probably the rental of the bucket truck, which my guess is, is if DPW, you know, if they don't look like, well, if the tree warden doesn't look like we're going to be renting our own bucket truck to have our own guys do it, we'll probably be, you know, just subbing out the survey.
I, I know in, in speaking with Public Works Director, you know, they've, they've circled back with the tree warden on the planning for the remainder of the fiscal year. We fully expect to expend everything in this line item this fiscal year.
Okay.
Very good. All right. Let's jump to the tax collector. I think Deb's muted.
Deb, we can't hear you.
There we go. I'm sorry.
There you are. No problem.
Okay. I did not update the report from the March thirty-first because there really has not been that much movement in the office. So I believe the numbers are pretty much where we stood when we talked last week when we're doing the budget cycle. I mean, we're on track, you know, from last year. It's not better. And if you have any questions.
I have none anymore.
Let you know, the liens, the lien number is low of, we usually lien in April. But because I was in the hospital, we're going to wait till the first of May to put the liens on. Just because of the special election and all with the town clerk, it was a timing issue.
All right, treasurer?
So the state stiff rate is point one-two. You still have CDs that are working. They're going to mature for May twentieth. I'm going to make sure I have a discussion with Ron on what cash flow looks like going forward for the next couple of months to see how to reinvest. As I said earlier, the, you know, stock market closed at a new high. The other indices are up. People are a little nervous from time to time about inflation, which would then turn interest rates around. But no real changes from the Fed, so no real changes for our investment portfolio essentially in the near future. Any questions?
So you don't want us to raise your budget more?
You find a way for me to buy a little Bitcoin.
Right up.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's the Sahara Desert.
On returns, we understand. All right. So let's get us down to the budget work. So I know Heidi's updated some numbers.
Hey, hey, Mike, it's, it's Ron. Before you get to the, jump to the budget workshop, there was, there's actually the fund activity statement for the Board of Ed and Special Education enrollment.
I skipped right over that. That was very nice of me.
You, you did. Yeah, so there's not, there's not a lot to say. Look, right, right now, not a whole lot of changes from last month. We're, we're, the, you know, special ed is, is, is tracking fine. We're, we're more likely than not actually going to have a, a little bit of a surplus in that, but.
Well, that would always be a pleasant surprise.
We still have a quarter of the year left and.
Right.
You know, a lot can happen in that period of time. But then the, the, the fund activity statement and enrollment numbers are in there for your review if you have any questions or.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on that before we jump over? All right. Thank you, Ron. Sorry, I skipped over you there. It's all excited for the tax collector, I guess. All right. Heidi, you want to bring us up? Look at that. Magic, I say it and it happens. I'm even zooming.
This is where you left, left off from last week.
Okay. Do we have any updated numbers from last week? Have we spoken, did we speak to? I know when I was in there the other day, they were going to, HR was going to check in with medical to see if there's any further updates.
So, no. The footnote being that I know, I know Ron and Craig Hirsch are both going to be, I believe, on a call tomorrow with some updates, but we're not, we're not being told there's going to be any dramatic.
Thank you.
But Ron, do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, I, I, you know, myself, Heidi and Craig will be on the call tomorrow. We're, I, I think we're, you know, we'll be getting an update. I don't expect anything earth-shattering there. I mean, if, if, if it moves a point up or down, I, you know, I think you guys were going to try to come in a little conserv, slightly above where they were going to, where they were telling us anyway, right?
Yeah, I mean, we were talking about, I know we had thrown up the, I think it was five and a half or something, or was that my recollection?
Right. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I wish, I wish the meeting were today, but it's not, so.
Right. But again, these could change till next year too.
Yeah, I don't expect firm numbers tomorrow.
Right. Okay.
How much more of an update? I, I don't know at this point.
I don't know. Anything, anything else on your side, Ken, that's changed or moved since we've talked?
No, no, no movements on the items we've discussed prior. I do have, you know, one, there were a couple of updates that I think, you know, Heidi ran. So there's a couple of things that we wanted to talk about. One is, so I mentioned the projects at the last meeting in regards to the town hall, chiller and component of the HVAC and some energy upgrades that we are trying to finalize and put before the council to act on. It looks pretty, it, it looks like a fairly good program. I think we're, we're, we're just kind of putting the finishing touches on it and having the town attorney review the agreement. As I said, the fun, the, the, the cost for that for the next fiscal year is currently sitting in contingency. And I would, you know, I, given we're, we're, we're pretty sure we're going to act on this, we could.
You want us to move it over?
We could move over the, the, the next fiscal year amount, which is, Ron has the exact amount of new, I believe it's in the ninety-two thousand dollar range, out into Public Works. We would put it in Public Work, I think the Public Works capital account within the operating budget so that if for some reason this does not happen in the end, I mean, it's, it's sitting in a, in a line item that wouldn't be used for anything else. And we could always address it, you know, the board could always address it at that point.
I would assume is a pretty very high likelihood that this is going to happen because it's obviously not a, you know. This is not a crazy request. Yeah.
It, it needs to happen.
Building maintenance. Right, exactly.
Very, we, we're, we actually, you know, we've got a very cost-effective way of doing this. Getting, getting some significant credits through an ever-source program to do this with energy savings. So I think it's a, it's a, it's a real prudent way to approach it, so.
Yeah. I think it makes sense to move it if everybody's okay with that.
Yes. Hey, hey, Mike, it's Ron. I just wanted to give you more specific detail. So the, the exact amount is ninety-two thousand oh sixty-four. And it would be moved out of contingency into town hall maintenance capital.
Okay. Do you have any issues with that?
No issues, and I'm assuming we don't need a formal motion.
No, we don't, because we're just mopping up the, just moving line items around. Yep, perfect. Great. Let's do it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have formal motions for you at the end to, you know.
Oh, you'll have lots of formal motions.
Oh, yeah, I, I read, I read them. Thank you. Yeah. I think if you just indicate in the minutes.
I think that's why these two people didn't show up tonight, because they didn't want to do motions.
Right, right, right. The, the second item I wanted to just discuss is, you know, we have, we have the town side wage and salary, you know, the wage adjustment line item. There was, you know, there, there was, there were some funds that were left in contingency at the time due to, you know, an open contract. And at the time, we did not have a approved part-time pay plan update with council, which we do, do now have at this point in time. So I certainly want to be able to entertain, to measure it, increases with our part-time staff. So I think Heidi's worked up the numbers of what was in contingency to cover that. I believe it was, Heidi covered it was like twenty-five thousand dollars. So if you'd be entertained, moving that out of contingency and into wage adjustments as well. Again, this is, these are all budget-neutral moves within, within your, the, the current proposal, so has no.
Yeah, no, I'd rather have it where it accurately belongs than.
Right.
Yeah. If we, we know confidently the number, let's move it over.
Yep. So those are the only two I have. I don't know that you ever got.
Can we have the, can we have the exact number for the record?
Well, I think because, because there's some moving parts there, I think Heidi's done an estimate of twenty-five thousand.
Oh, okay. That, that would be the, yeah. That would be the amount, twenty-five.
I mean, obviously, there's a process still to make sure that they're all warranted, et cetera, and all that, so. Other than that, I, I, I know that I think you need a final number on the HR insurance that would be moved over on both, from both the county and the Board of Ed, right? Just to get that on the record.
Yeah, so, actually, can I speak to a couple of things, Ken? Because Vida had, Vida had informed me, she wanted to increase, I remember, her budget. You guys had increased her, her revenue. So she needs like commensurate increase in land, town clerk land records line item from eleven thousand to, she needs an increase by eight thousand for a grand total of nineteen thousand in that line item. And that, that'll just give her coverage to.
To record all those things that are happening.
Exactly, exactly.
Makes sense. That's, thank God, somebody thought of that because we didn't.
Nor did I, but our, our, our town clerk was all over that.
He's on the ball.
He, he is.
That was Vida.
Yeah, that's great. It's a great catch.
Yeah, so the, the insurance adjustments for both, you know, for the town side.
Heidi, you want to pop that one in?
Yeah, so that would be, yes.
Yes.
Okay. So it's seventy thousand even on the town side?
Did we plug those numbers last week, I think?
Yeah, I don't know if we put them in here. They were, you know, it, it was a, it's a slight adjustment. It's a slight change from last week, but pretty close. I think it was, I think on the, last week it was sixty-five. We bumped the town side.
Those are my notes are sixty-five, yeah.
Yeah. And the board side is slightly up also. So the board side is, is made up of, it's, it's, it was one sixty-five. Hang on one second. So the board side adjustment, I believe, is once, it'll be, it's one seventy-three for the insurance portion. And I believe the balance of the board side adjustment is the ninety-seven, which is the settlement, Fertile Wheeler settlement?
Correct. Perfect.
And just to confirm, I believe the, that ninety-seven was added to the fund, fund balance appropriation. Make that neutral budget or tax rate neutral, I guess, is the way to say it.
That's very well-chosen words. Exactly. All right.
I believe those were all of my notes.
Okay. Ron or Heidi, anything else on your side?
I don't know, but I, it might be worthwhile starting at the top and just.
That's what I was thinking. I was just going to, what I was going to see if there was any other moves. And if not, I was going to exactly start at the top and walk through the whole thing.
Well, the, the other thing, because I, I see Justin on here, and I don't know, we could either tackle it now or after we're comfortable.
Let's hit him now. Yeah, let's go. If we have Justin, let's grab Justin right now.
Because Justin did, so you guys have an updated grand list in your packet. And about a half hour after your packet went out, Justin didn't inform me of, you know, some, some revisions. As you know, the grand list is fluid.
Always a moving target, yeah.
Yeah, so we have updated numbers that are, are not in your packet.
I just want to know, are they positive or negative?
They're, they're, it's to the positive. Yeah.
Okay, good. Then I want to.
I don't want to, I don't want to steal Justin's thunder, so I'll, I'll pass it over to him right now. Basically, we just added, it was four hundred and sixty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-five in, you know, net taxable assessment as a result of some pro rates we did.
Anybody have any questions on Justin's numbers? And do we want to walk through the whole spreadsheet? Do we want to, I mean?
Can I just confirm, Ron, you've, or Heidi, you've added, have you updated the model with Justin's revised grand list?
So we, we have not, Ken, I figured we'd walk through it now.
Yeah, that's what I was.
As long as we, as long as we don't.
We're twice, yeah.
Yeah. In this way, we get, we've got Justin's eyes on it at the same time, so.
Perfect.
Um, looks like she's, looks like Heidi's doing it right now.
She is, yep. Nothing better than real time, right?
Nothing better than real time.
Pretty much the same thing you used to do in the, the annex when we met in person, but this way everyone can see it on the screen too.
Yeah. We used to just have it on the big screen, which was a lot easier to read than this thing is.
Right?
Yeah.
We'll get back to a big screen.
I'm just older, one or the other.
Six oh seven eight two six seven. That's the number I have, Justin. Is that the number?
Yeah, that's matching my numbers.
Yep.
Okay.
Heidi wants to know if you, so.
On a drum roll.
Want to drumroll on the mill rate right now, now?
You want to go through, make sure you caught everything first?
Yeah, let's go through the whole thing, and then we'll drumroll the mill rate.
It's just where we are right now.
Got it.
So.
All right, what do you want?
Yeah, I don't, um, that, that's, that's the revenue number I have for town clerk. I mean, that's the adjustment.
Okay.
You guys good with that?
Fifty-eight. Fifty-eight thousand increase?
Yep.
Yep.
Ken, I think you, 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 uh, provided that ECS.
ECS number, right?
Yeah, that looks, yeah, again, that's based upon the governor's budget of flat funding ECS, which all the information I'm hearing at this point, um, is, is positive that, that we'll be able to, uh, to see a flat fund of ECS, so it's the best information I have right now.
Okay, yeah, no, everything I'm reading, hearing from the feds is, I don't see it going down from there, so. Ooh, keep our fingers crossed, let's go.
And again, that's the budget-neutral, uh, handling of the unassigned fund balance, covering, you know, increasing the assigned fund balance to cover the, uh, settlement with the Bridgeport Board of Education.
Yep.
Contingency, that's the, uh, ninety-two oh sixty-four and the twenty-five thousand.
Okay.
For some of those two items.
Town clerk increase we just talked about.
Those look good.
Adjustment and insurance, looks good.
Yep.
Maintenance capital, good.
Yep.
School adjustment.
Yep, that's, you know, again, the combined total of the, uh, settlement and the, uh, health insurance, uh, insurance adjustment. And then there's the, Heidi, if you could scroll right back up, the ninety, what, the ninety-seven, yeah, there we go, the
Right.
settlement, okay, that's everything I have.
Okay, now we can scroll, now we can drumroll. Okay, so that gives us mill rate thirty-six thirty-six, is that what I'm reading?
I see. That's correct.
Easy number to remember. Total budget just north of ninety-three.
Which is a what percent increase?
Three, three, four, is that what I'm reading?
Oh, you know what, hey, Heidi, on the spreadsheet, yeah, it's, is that, oh, yeah, yeah, it's a three, three, four, just the line item below is, yep.
What do you? I can't.
I don't know if we can see the entire, uh. Oh, I see where you're looking at, nevermind.
Yeah. Then the.
Different, different number we were talking about, got it.
And then, so the, the mill rate increase is two-point-four-eight percent, is that what I read?
Yep, correct.
Okay. Certainly under two and a half, that's good. All right, anything else we need to cover, go ahead.
So when, I, I have some items that I'd like to put some motions on the table, maybe, um, for various things, can I do that now, or do you want to wait till you get to a particular section?
Well, when you say motions, I mean, we basically, this is a budget workshop, so we just kind of talk about anything we want to talk about.
Okay, so.
Discuss, I don't know if we need a formal motion of anything.
Okay, um, so I have a, I have a couple of things. The first thing, let me go right to education. Notwithstanding the savings that we've identified from insurance and from the Wheeler settlement being picked up at the town, I would like to fund the board of ed at the entire amount they requested, recognizing that they've already identified for next year an additional forty-two thousand dollars in, uh, special ed funds, recognizing that there are programs that they wanted to bring back, but for these other items, driving the percent increase above what the board itself was comfortable with, recognizing that we don't actually tell them where and how to spend money. I would feel comfortable giving them what their board approved, letting them use, uh, make educational decisions um, in the best interest that they feel is necessary, um, by taking funds out of those particular line items and putting them where they think it will do the most good.
Okay, I mean, I know, well, you can all discuss, I mean, I think, I know you, you probably know my, uh, feelings on it, I think they're already at a five-point-one-six percent increase, which is going to be a tough swallow for a lot of townspeople. Um, the good news is, we've been creative with financing, so, um, listening to the superintendent tell us he's comfortable with the numbers as we discussed, I don't see any reason why to go over and above, and especially why we put five hundred thousand dollars aside for special education in a fund. So why would we have to worry about a forty-two thousand dollar increase in special education? The point of doing a fund, it's the whole point of putting money away for rainy days, is that we don't have to worry about an over-budget, just a over-budget. So I
So.
adamantly opposed to doing that. But let's let everybody else speak, Steve, before you go back in.
Okay.
So let's go, Dane and Donna, you want to jump in?
Hi, it's Donna Lynn, yeah, I, I agree with you, Mike, I think that there's a, there's a large enough increase that's there already, and I think we should just stay the course.
Dane?
I concur, I agree with you, Mike and Donna Lynn.
Steve, you want to jump back in, feel free?
Yeah, I just wanted to, to address the, the, the special ed funding. I, I said, I agree with putting the money away, um, to backstop them for something that they don't know that's going to happen in the middle of the year. But we're in a budget now, and I believe that, just like we're making adjustments today, right now, on other line items for the latest information we know, I think we should do the same thing, or give the, at least give the board of ed the, the, the dollars to do the same thing, and we should be creating a budget that is based on the best information they have. Um, the reality is, we all agree that things are going to happen dramatically during the course of the year, or during the eighteen months from the time they pass their budget to the time the, the school year ends for that particular budget year. And so, to be accurate, I think we should put at least the forty-two thousand dollars that they've already told us they're going to need back into the budget.
Okay, so, I think the other three of us, um, disagree, so.
Okay, very good, I want to get it on the record.
Fair enough. Next.
Um, tree trimming, um, that line item, um, let me get a reference for people, um, page one-seventy-one, tab, what is it, twenty-nine? We've maintained the fifty-nine thousand dollars for a number of years. I remember back in twenty-nineteen, at these meetings, um, the discussion about how, how we could keep doing more and more because the, the trees keep dying. I had an experience in twenty-nineteen where a tree, my property is adjacent to the town, and an ash tree died um, about three feet from my property, and had it fallen down, it would have taken out my house. And the town, uh, came and, and took it down, and that allowed me to have a conversation both, uh, with the tree warden, as well as the company, um, that we use during the off-season to, to trim trees. And I think we should be adding some dollars, um, to this account. And, uh, I know in the conversations in twenty-nineteen, the, the Department of Public Works Director and Assistant Director said, yeah, they could spend more. Comment that I had, um, during the earlier part of the meeting, um, about the seventy-five hundred dollars that is in there for a, a bucket truck that may or may not be used, if that money can just be slid over, that's one thing. Otherwise, I was going to suggest we take some of that and put it to the, you know, to the fifty-nine thousand dollar tree trimming subset. But I would favor adding at least a couple of thousand dollars to trimming of trees, so that we can add some every year and, and deal with what we, we know is, uh, work that has to be done, um, so.
Again, my opinion, I think, you know, Ken is probably the most hands-on first selectman I've seen. There's been no requests from Public Works, Ken and works with them all the time, uh, I believe this is the budget they requested. We have contingency if a tree falls down, but, um, I would leave it the way it is. Donna, or?
Dana, I agree. Be bad today.
Yeah, I do, too, I think if you don't use the full seventy-five hundred, you could slice some money over there.
Okay.
Uh, Mike, it's, it's Ron, you know, the other thing, Chris has access to, if, if need be, um, in an emergency situation, town aid road money could be used.
There's a big fund for that, exactly.
On right away, by the roads there.
Um, and my final issue is, is the roads themselves, and it's not so much changing any budget line items. I went through the material provided by the first selectman, um, and I looked at the roads that are on the list. The, I, I had a couple of, uh, I think most of them are really good choices based on the pavement condition index. Little surprised that East Village was on, because it had a much higher pavement condition index at the last study. My other concern going forward is, um, the, all this drainage work, we've never really had a plan um, with a total estimated cost for all the drainage. And when I see that drainage on these roads is, is about another thirty percent, when we talk about how much money we're spending on roads, we're no longer talking about just the road surface, and I think that's a substantial amount of money. Um, I'm not proposing we do anything about it now, but I do think we need to talk about, uh, a road plan going forward, because we're obviously spending certain monies on drainage and not on additional miles of asphalt, and, um, I, I think.
I would agree with that, and I think that would be good to have that.
I need to talk about roads, you know, outside of a budget, um, process, outside of a budget cycle, and so those are my comments, thank you.
That one, I completely agree with you on, I think we should definitely set up over the summer and spend some time, uh, going through and getting the updated plans and making sure that, because you're right, I noticed the same thing, we had a lot of, uh, you know, roads that we thought were getting done but weren't. Because of drainage.
And, and, and the, and the one administrative, and, and I don't want to sound, sound picky or anything, but we, we've got to stop calling plans preliminary, especially when we have a twenty-twenty-one plan that's seventy-five percent executed, it's, it's no longer a preliminary plan. I don't know what it is, but it's not preliminary.
Fair enough.
Uh, I, I, again, I just, not going to beat a dead horse, I just think we need to sit down and see what we can do to, uh.
Let me address, Mike, if I can address some of those things, so, so first of all, um, I think I'll, I'll grant Mr. Newackey a pass on, on forgetting to take preliminary off of his current, uh, spreadsheet when he updated it. It was obviously an oversight, but obviously the current fiscal year is almost over, so that's not preliminary anymore. Um, the fiscal year twenty-two obviously is, things can change dramatically, and the best example is East Village Road. It did have a fairly decent PCI, which is why it was originally scheduled for a mill and pave, uh, for certain sections of it, not even the entire road, but, um, in their inspection, when they do their, uh, inspections every year, um, they found a dramatic, this was a roadway that they found a dramatic change in the PCI versus when it was last, uh, inspected, and that was primarily attributable to drainage issues that was causing, uh, the roadway to deteriorate faster than, um, had been anticipated. So that's why it ended up, um, where it did. Um, and as far as the drainage work, I mean, this is, you know, uh, doing drainage work as part of this program is not new. This is something that was started, um, you know, actually, you know, before I took office to, to do things the right way, we were, uh, historically paving over poor drainage systems, which was not money well-spent. Uh, and I think now the, you know, the, the town crews using the, using the camera, the scope, uh, evaluating that drainage as they approach, uh, each roadway is the smart way to do it. Um, we certainly can have Mr. Newackey come to a future meeting and kind of talk about that process. I have no issue with kind of discussing how they go through that assessment and that process, it's a, it's a great conversation to have. But, you know, to not address drainage as part of roadway maintenance would be, um, would really not be strategic. It would be, um, we'd be back at, uh, potential, uh, doing things, uh, in a not very peaceful fashion. So, um, we have to look at drainage, uh, whenever we're looking at road paving, so.
So let me just clarify, Ken, thank, thank you, I, I, my comments may have been misconstrued. I completely agree, I completely agree, drainage needs to be looked at ahead of time. I completely agree that with the process we were using to do drainage during one cycle, let the road sit and go in the, the following construction year after it settles and do that. The, my issue is cost. When the, when the company that did the twenty-eighteen, December twenty-eighteen evaluation of our roads and presented in early twenty-nineteen to the town council, that report contained a number, a dollar number, I don't have it in front of me, I think it was around eighteen million, um, but don't quote me, for the next ten years, and the question was asked, does that number include the drainage? And the answer was only a little bit, and so my issue is, yeah, we got to do the drainage. Yeah, I'd like to know what that whole drainage thing is going to cost. And if we're talking about spending a million dollars on roads, thinking we're going to pave X number of miles for a million dollars, but thirty percent is going to be drainage, then we should be spending a million three hundred thousand a year and do it so that we keep up with the amount of roads, that's where my concern is. I fully want to do the drainage, I want to get the number out there and included, um, so we understand what the total cost of everything is.
Thanks, Steve, I understand what you're saying, thank you. And to that, one thing I'll just add, too, is I know that, uh, you know, one of the items on the capital list is the, is that excavator, and the intent for that is to be able to, um, have us, allow us to do more drainage in-house, which will further lower costs, so. Um, but again, now, I, I understand your, your comment, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's it for me today.
Okay. Yes. Sorry about that. Lost game by for a visit. Okay, uh, any other questions, comments, before we? roll forward? You guys hear me? All right?
Yes, I can hear you, and I don't have any other comments until we get into the various motions.
All right. We ready for motions, Ron?
Okay, I was, I was just hoping if you guys would be, if we could take like a maybe a five, ten-minute recess. I just wanted to review them with Heidi real quick.
Fine. By me, it's ten after. You want to come back at twenty after? I don't want to rush you, Ron. Take what, take what time.
Yeah, I just wanted to go through and make sure the numbers were,
Okay.
Were, were, I was agreeing with him. That's all.
Yeah, I'm just not sure. I mean, obviously, in the packet, we got the motions in blank.
Yes.
I'm just not sure how you want us to fill them out.
Yeah, so we just, I just want to run through the spreadsheet, make sure everything came over properly. And then we'll pull them up on the screen. All right? Good point. You can, I think you can put that up at the, at the end, right?
At the end, yeah.
Those are, those would be the last motions, so we could certainly put those up at the end. Unless you want to, while I'm reviewing this, you guys can certainly spend time looking over the capital. We have the capital budget and capital.
I don't think, I think, I think it's changed from what I ran through.
I was going to say nothing changed from last week, right?
The only thing we did do is Heidi added the, she's going to add the Town Hall pillar project under the, you know, but under operating expenses, the funding source. So it's just there, there's simply to capture it in the capital plan, but it's really nothing new. There we go.
It's good.
So Mike, I think you might have been having a sidebar. I think Ron.
I was having a sidebar. Sorry about that.
Ron, Ron and Heidi were going to ask for like a five or ten-minute recess just to triple check.
Ten-minute recess would be perfect.
All right.
I got seven thirteen. You want to come back at seven twenty-five?
Seven twenty-five should work. Sure. I think we'll keep the meeting up and running.
Yeah, I'll just, I'm going to have my dinner then.
There we go.
Thanks.
All right. Heidi, you want to pause the recording or you want me to?
This conference will now be recorded.
Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance, I move to approve the twenty-one, twenty, excuse, let me start. I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Revenue Budget for Total Property Taxes of eighty million nine hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars.
You have a second?
Donald in Wales, I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll do a vote. Steve?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Four to zero.
Okay. Donna, you're up.
Yep.
Oops, sorry.
Aye. Donald in Wales, I motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Revenue Budget for Total Licenses and Permits of nine hundred thirteen thousand three, nine hundred thirty-five dollars.
Second.
Dan Kirk Navy, Board of Finance, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Oh, you want, okay. Steve Kirsch, Board of Finance, to approve the.
No, you just got to give me an aye. We're just voting still.
Oh, oh, aye. No wonder I was confused.
Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, Board of Finance, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Revenue Budget for Total Intergovernmental Revenue of five million seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
I'll second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Make a motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Revenue Budget for Total Charges of Services, or Services of nine hundred and ninety-four thousand.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Right. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one.
Oh, you got it. We're still voting on this one.
I voted. Aye.
Oh. Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Now you're good to go.
Now I'm good. Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Revenue Budget for Total Interest and Dividends of ninety-seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Second.
Donald in Wales, I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Steve?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Okay. Donald in Wales, I motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Revenue Budget for Total Other Revenue of seventy-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? None. All in favor, Steve?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, Board of Finance, I motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Total General Fund Operating Revenue of eighty-eight million eight hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Steve?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Budget for Total Other Financing Sources of four million one hundred and ninety-nine thousand eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one.
I'm sorry, Steve, Mike. Before we get going on the expenditures, can we, Justin, I see Justin's still on. I don't know if we need him any longer with the mill rate.
I don't think so.
Okay, so Justin, if you can hear me.
You're excused.
Okay, sorry about that, guys.
No problem.
No problem.
I didn't see him there on my phone.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two Total General Fund Revenue and Other Financing Sources of ninety-three million forty-nine thousand two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Donald in Wales, I second.
Any discussion? None. Steve?
Aye.
Donna?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay.
Aye. I, Donald in Wales, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the First Selectmen of one hundred eighty-three thousand seven hundred forty-eight dollars.
Second.
Dan Kirk Navy, I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, Board of Finance, I motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Town Attorney, two hundred and sixty thousand five hundred dollars.
I second. Mike Manjos. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Dane? I mean, Donaldin, I'm sorry I jumped over here.
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Town Council of fifty-three hundred dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Board of Finance of two hundred and thirty-four thousand one hundred and eighty-six dollars.
Donald in Wales, Donald in Wales, I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Donald in Wales, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Register of Voters of one hundred and twenty-four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars.
Second. Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, I motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Town Church of one hundred and eighty-one thousand and seventeen dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second that. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Tax Collector of one hundred ninety-three thousand three hundred and forty-one dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
And Mike, well, myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Treasurer of eleven thousand and fifty-six dollars.
Second.
Donald in Wales, I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I, Donald in Wales, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Boards and Commissions of ten thousand six hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
Dan Kirk Navy, I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, I motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Senior Center of two hundred and seventy-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Budget for the Economic Development Department, I'm assuming, EDD, of ninety-six thousand eight hundred dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
And Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for Human Resources of five million four hundred thousand twenty-eight dollars.
You have a second?
Donald in Wales, I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I, Donald in Wales, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for Finance of three hundred thirty-seven thousand six hundred eighty-three dollars.
Second.
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for Information Technology of six hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for the Assessors of two hundred and forty-eight thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for Engineering of two hundred and twenty-two thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars.
Second.
Donald in Wales, seconded.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I, Donald in Wales, motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for Inland Wetlands of eighty-six thousand nine hundred seventy-six dollars.
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, I motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for Building of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand four hundred and two dollars.
Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two General Fund Expenditure Budget for Planning and Zoning of two hundred and ninety-one thousand nine hundred and forty-eight dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-twenty-one. Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for town hall maintenance of five hundred and thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars.
Donald and Wales, I second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I, Donald and Wales, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for special programs of one hundred forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and forty-nine dollars.
Second?
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for regional programs of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mike Manjos, motion to approve twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for police of six million, three hundred, one thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for the Monroe Fire Department of two hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars.
Donald and Wales, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I, Donald and Wales, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for the Stevenson Fire Department of one hundred ninety-seven thousand, four hundred fifty-three dollars.
Second?
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for the deputy fire department of two hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for fire hydrant services of six hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself? Aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for the fire marshal of one hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Donald and Wales, second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
I, Donald and Wales, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for emergency management of twenty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars.
Second?
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, I motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for EMS of nine hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget of public works of three million, one hundred and ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for sanitation of four hundred and eighty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Donald and Wales, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I, Donald and Wales, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for the health department of two hundred forty-two thousand, seven hundred eighty-two dollars.
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, I motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for social services of eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and one dollars.
Mike Manjos, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for the library of eight hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-two dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for Parks and Recreation of nine hundred and nineteen thousand, eight hundred and six dollars.
Donald and Wales, second.
Second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
And myself, aye.
I, Donald and Wales, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for the Board of Education of sixty-one million, five hundred and twenty-one thousand, sixty-eight dollars.
Second?
Yeah, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Dan Kirk Navy, I move to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for debt service of five million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars.
Mike Manjos, I second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for special projects of two thousand dollars.
Steve Kirsch, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two general fund expenditure budget for total appropriations of one million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Donald and Wales, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I, Donald and Wales, motion to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two total general fund operating expenditures of ninety-three million, forty-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Second?
Dan Kirk Navy, second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
Mike, Mike, I'll take the last one and make it a, uh, combined, uh, of the two statements. Uh, motion, Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the twenty-two-one, twenty-two capital budget of eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-one thousand, sixty-four dollars in the full capital budget in five-year capital improvement plan as revised and to have a co- a complete copy of the twenty-two-one, twenty-two capital budget in five-year capital improvement plan incorporated into the minutes of this meeting.
Donald and Wales, second.
So, any discussion?
So-
Hearing none. Steve, whoop, but-
Uh, Mike, it's Ron. Do you wanna, do you wanna pull up a copy of, wanna have Heidi, uh, pull up a copy of that just to review it quick, or? I mean, there-
I feel like we just did, but, there you go.
Yeah.
There it is.
Oh, did, did you guys review it?
Yeah, we did this, yeah.
Yeah.
We did it for the end. All right. I think we're good.
We need the vote.
So-
Yes, Steve.
Yeah, so, be- before you vote, could Heidi, let's, let's just get the modified, uh, motion. If you're, if you guys are okay with that.
So you, you stick an "and" after the word "as revised" and you take the complete sentence, the- it's in the text of discussion.
Okay, perfect.
And you add it. So, it needs budget of dollar sign, that text revised, and to have a complete copy, et cetera, period, the end of the meeting.
Uh, it's kind of, my ears may have deceived me, but Steve, could you repeat the dollar amount just to be sure that we have it accurate? I, it's correct on the screen, but I think I might have heard you say a, a different number.
Eleven million, five hundred and forty-one thousand, and sixty-four dollars.
Thank you.
Perfect. All right. We're all good now? Okay, we'll call for the vote. Steve?
Aye.
Donaldin?
Aye.
Dane?
Aye.
And myself, aye. That's it? It's a marathon. All right. So we are good to go, guys. I, um, just wanna say thank you for everybody. I know we put a lot of time in and a lot of back-to-back meetings and that kind of stuff. Um, thrilled once again that we did it all unanimously, even though there's only four of us, but I know the other two were on board as well, uh, that they joined us there. And, uh, I just wanna say, I think coming in with the mill rate increase of the two forty-eight is great. Uh, I think it's still gonna take a lot of effort and, uh, positive reinforcement out there to make sure this passes on the first time, which is what we'd love to see happen, so, uh, hopefully we can all, uh, spread the word and get it out there, be ready for referendum. On that, I think we'll take a motion.
Steve Kirsch, motion to adjourn.
Thank you so much, Steve. Thank you all.